Call the row please. Okay. Commissioner Vaughn?
Present.
Commissioner Malkey?
Here.
Commissioner Ferger?
Present.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes, Chief Paulson.
Here. City attorneys report?
Nothing other than record all of the last minutes.
Okay. Municipal Order 2013-29, approval of the minutes of a regular meeting held on Monday, March 11, 2013, and a special call meeting held on Wednesday, March 13, 2013. Any motion?
I move.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Verge, Mr. President, second by the margin. Discussion. Call the row. Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkey?
Epstein.
Commissioner Ferger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes, Chief Paulson.
Yes. Bachelor review, anything? Outstanding?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
On item number 22, VW Y Construction, a terminal roof.
Of the airport terminal. We got the insurance check for this. The insurance is in our name. And then...
You refer that to the... Before you figure out what a terminal is. Okay, item number 15, were D5 pads, are those for the defibrillator? And where's this defibrillator located? With the fire department?
Johnny, where's the defibrillator?
I think they've got them in the... In all the...
The defibrillator pads.
Ward heart pad?
Uh huh.
They're on the fire truck.
Okay, and you keep them on the fire truck if you don't let the EMS take care of that?
Those are defibrillators that we own in the city. A really short one, actually. Anyways, that was the pad that went out of service. It went out of date. They just weren't even good anymore.
We're looking at a grant that might...
David, please talk about it for us.
On item number 48, a quarter master, tie clips, hat...
Hat covers.
Okay, and those were for what department?
PD.
Okay. And that's all the questions I have.
How long do those pads last?
On those particular models, about two years. You know, some of the ones we've looked at, you might get a little longer out of them. The other problem is the batteries. The... There's different brands that actually charging of the AD of certain little pads. So when you... You either buy and you set up pads, they go out of date. It helps charge the batteries or puts the batteries internally charged. Or if you use a pad and you buy and you set it, which you would obviously do, it also charges them up. But yeah, that's one of those batteries that was probably on the value too, was about $200.
Anything else?
I had a question about 57, line 57 and 58. We've got a switch and an alternator, Union City Ford. Assuming that's Public Works.
The switch was PD.
It was PD.
The alternator was Public Works.
Is there any way we can know what vehicles these are put on? I mean, so...
Yeah, if they write it on the PL, I can put it on here.
Make sure they do write it on?
Yeah, we can do that.
They do?
I do. Do you have enough room, Lisa?
Well, sometimes I do, but sometimes I don't.
I just hate to see us putting a lot of you to, you know, something that we don't suppose or whatever.
There's a pretty detailed description on there and it doesn't go on all the...
Well, I don't have... Yeah, I don't have that much room. I've got... I've got about as much room as you can see there where it says tie clips and hat covers. That's why I haven't abbreviated so much. But I could usually fit a truck number or something in if they give it to me.
That'd be great. Thanks, Lisa.
Any other questions?
No, about voucher, but this is probably a good time just to ask the question, Lisa. We are obviously continuing to review the budget regularly. And I assume it's your intent to review it at the first meeting of the month and not the second?
Yeah, at the first, because I'll... At the end of the month, I'll do the... I'll get it done. As long as I get it done in time, we'll do it for the...
Anything else?
Well, as long as we do it regularly.
Right, right.
Anything else? Okay. Strategic planning discussion?
The city attorney has... City attorney and I talked, well, she did most of the work. And has gotten together a tentative ordinance that I'd like to... Like to us consider tonight. And if you don't have any issues with it, we could... Maybe you can go ahead and read it. And then I'd like to, before our next meeting, Ms. Mayor, get you and I together. And we can talk about the... So forth.
Okay. I have no problem. You want to read it into the minutes? Okay, this is ordinance. 2013-05, An Ordinance of the City of Fulton, Kentucky, Creating and Establishing Article 5 of Chapter 16, Community Development of the City of Fulton, Kentucky Code of Ordinances. Whereas the City of Fulton has elected to create Article 5 to Chapter 16, Community Development of the City of Fulton, Kentucky Code of Ordinances, for the purpose of creating this strategic planning committee and now therefore be hereby ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fulton, Kentucky to wit Section 1, establish that there is hereby established a strategic planning committee to be known as the Fulton Strategic Planning Committee. Section 2, Composition, Appointment of Members, Terms of Office. Subsection A, the Fulton Strategic Planning Committee shall consist of the mayor and eight additional members to be appointed by the Fulton Commission of the City as follows. Subsection 1, One Commissioner from the Fulton City Commission shall be appointed by the City Commission and seven additional members that must either reside within the corporate city limits of Fulton, Kentucky or own property located within the corporate city limits of Fulton, Kentucky. Subsection B, the Fulton Strategic Planning Committee members shall be appointed for terms of two years. Except that in making the original appointments, the Board of Commissioners shall appoint as follows. One, four members for a term of one year. And two, four members for a term of two years. Section 3, Compensation of Members. All members of the Fulton Strategic Planning Committee shall serve as such without compensation. Section 4, Election of Officers. The Fulton City Commissioner appointed to the committee shall initially serve as chairperson of the committee for a term of one year. And thereafter, the Fulton Strategic Planning Committee shall elect from its members a chairperson who shall act without compensation. The Fulton Strategic Planning Committee shall elect a secretary annually to record the minutes of each meeting who shall also act without compensation. Section 5, Vacancies. All vacancies in the membership of the Fulton Strategic Planning Committee shall be filled in the same manner that the original appointments are made. Section 6, Purpose, Powers, and Duties. The purpose of the Fulton Strategic Planning Committee shall be to collaborate with members of the committee and the community and to design and formulate a strategic plan for the city that preserves the heritage of our community and promotes the economic development and growth of the City of Fulton, Kentucky. This committee shall be responsible for developing a comprehensive strategic plan and memorializing said plan in writing and/or illustration that can be utilized by the city and surrounding county government, chambers of commerce, individuals, and entities for the promotion of the City of Fulton, Kentucky. Section 7, Expenditure Limitation. The Fulton Strategic Planning Committee expenditures shall be subject to the approval by the City of Fulton Board of Commissioners. Section 8, The Ordinance shall be put before the commission and shall be effective upon its second reading and adoption and publication as required by law. Anybody that's got a coat, everybody? Okay, that's first reading. Wait, you speak, everyone. We'll have to the next meeting. Municipal Order 2013-30, Authorization for the City Manager to Hire a Part-Time Code Enforcement Officer. Johnny?
Johnny? We made a regulation this week. We conducted our interviews and Daniel Zikfus is the top candidate we came up with. His skills, his peers, his knowledge of what we do and our code industry already will help. He works part-time. He works full-time in animal service. So his rotating schedule, we'll just... We'll work around that. But he's definitely able to do it. He's willing to take the job, so. I'd like for us to get your pleasure to authorize Cub to hire him.
Questions?
Okay, any questions? Okay. Municipal Order 2013-31? Oh, yeah, 31, we go with the same one, can't we? Authorization to hire Daniel Zikfus. For the City Manager to hire Daniel Zikfus as a part-time code enforcement officer. I need a motion to that effect?
I move.
Motion by Jeff, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Bill, any further discussion? Call the row, please. Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkey?
He is.
Commissioner Ferger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Yes. Reading of Proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Carter, you want to read this, Mark?
Sure.
He read it back.
Proclamation, Fair Housing Month, City of Fulton. Whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title 8 declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. And whereas the City of Fulton is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and today, many realty companies and associations support fairer housing laws. And whereas the fairer housing groups and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have over the years received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination and found too many that have proved upon investigation to be violations of the fairer housing laws. And whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved. I...
May.
...of the City of... Mayor Elaine Forrester of the City of Fulton, on behalf of the citizens of DuHare Rock, proclaim this month of April as Fair Housing Month and express the hope that this year deserves more fairer housing practices throughout the city. Approve this day, 25th day of March, 2013.
This is something... We had a... Because we had a grant with the housing, we needed to do this. Isn't that correct?
That's correct. Block grant requires the recipients to do something to affirm this further fair housing.
Uh huh.
And one of the things that you can do is proclaim April as Fair Housing Month this year.
Okay. So do we have to publish this or anything?
You don't have to publish it.
Okay. I just wondered. Okay. First reading of City Ordinance 2013-04, Revising, Amending, Restating, Codifying, and Compiling Existing General Ordinances of the City. I have that one too. Which one is it?
City Order 2013-04.
I have a speaking.
This is City Ordinance 2013-04, Revising, Amending, Restating, Codifying, Compiling Certain Existing General Ordinances as the City deals with subjects embraced in the code. Whereas the present general ordinances of the City of Fulton are incomplete and inadequate and the manner of arrangement, classification, and indexing thereof is insufficient to meet the immediate needs of the city. And whereas the acts of the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Kentucky empower and authorize the legislative body of this city to revise, amend, restate, codify, and compile the existing ordinance or ordinances and all new ordinances not yet before adopted or published, and to incorporate the ordinances into one ordinance in book form. And whereas the legislative body of the City of Fulton has authorized a general compilation, revision, and codification of the ordinances of the City of a general and permanent nature and publication of such ordinances in book form, now therefore be ordained by the legislative body of the City of Fulton that Section 1, The General Ordinances of the City of Fulton, as herein revised, amended, restated, codified, and compiled in book form or adopted as and shall constitute the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fulton. Section 2, The Code as adopted in Section 1 shall consist of the following titles. Fulton, Kentucky Code of Ordinances, Table, Contents, Article, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Chapter 2, Administration, 1 in General, 2, Board of Commissioners, 3, Officers, 4, Board and Commissions, 5, Code of Ethics, 6, Finances, Chapter 3, Reserve, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages, 1 in General, 2, Alcoholic Beverage Control Administrator, 3, Licenses, 4, Sell by the Drink, Chapter 5, Reserve, Chapter 6, Amusements and Entertainments, 1 in General, 2, Pool and Billiards, Chapter 7, Reserve, Chapter 8, Animals, Chapter 9, Reserve, Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations, 1 in General, 2, Building Code, 3, Electrical Code, 4, Plumbing Code, 5, Maintenance Code, Chapter 11, Reserve, Chapter 12, Businesses, Chapter 13, Reserve, Chapter 14, Cemeteries, 1 in General, 2, Rules and Regulations, Chapter 15, Reserve, Chapter 16, Community Development, 1 in General, 2, Tourism and Convention Commission, 3, Industrial Development Authority, 4, Office of Community Development, Chapter 17, Reserve, Chapter 18, Emergency Services, 1 in General, 2, E911, Emergency Telephone Service, Chapter 19, Reserve, Chapter 20, Environment, 1 in General, 2, Noxious Weeds, Chapter 21, Reserve, Chapter 22, Fire Prevention and Protection, 1 in General, 2, Fire Code, 3, State Standards of Safety, Chapter 23, Reserve, Chapter 24, Flood Control, 1 in General, 2, National Flood Insurance Program, Chapter 25, Reserve, Chapter 26, Human Relations, 1 in General, 2, Fair Housing, Chapter 27, Reserve, Chapter 28, Law Enforcement, 1 in General, 2, Police Department, 3, Law Enforcement Foundation Program, Chapter 29, Reserve, Chapter 30, Library, Chapter 31, Reserve, Chapter 32, Offenses, Chapter 33, Reserve, Chapter 34, Peddlers and Solicitors, 1 in General, 2, Charitable Solicitation, Chapter 35, Reserve, Chapter 36, Planning, 1 in General, 2, Municipal Planning Commission, 3, Board of Adjustment, Chapter 37, Reserve, Chapter 38, Secondhand Goods, 1 in General, 2, Precious Metals Dealers, Chapter 39, Reserve, Chapter 40, Solid Waste, 1 in General, 2, Litter, 3, Collection and Disposal, 4, Solid Waste Management Facility, Chapter 41, Reserve, Chapter 42, Street Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Chapter 43, Reserve, Chapter 44, Taxation, 1 in General, 2, Use of County Assessments as Basis for Additive Taxation, 3, Occupational License Tax, 4, License Tax for Employees, 5, Restaurant Tax, 6, Transient Rent Tax, 7, Bank Franchise and Local Deposit Tax, and 8, Gross Receipt Utility Tax. Chapter 45, Reserve, Chapter 46, Telecommunication, Chapter 47, Reserve, Chapter 48, Traffic and Vehicles, 1 in General, 2, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Chapter 49, Transient Merchants and Businesses, Chapter 50, Utilities, 1 in General, 2, Water, 3, Sewers, 4, Gas, 5, Electricity, 6, Fees, Rates, and Charges. Parallel References, References to Kentucky Remined Statutes, References to 1977 Code, References to Resolutions, References to Ordinances and Index. Section 3, All Prior Ordinances pertaining to the subjects treated in the code shall be deemed repealed from and after the effective date of the code, except as they are included and reordained in whole or in part in the code. Provided that such repeal shall not affect any offense committed or penalty incurred or any right established prior to the effective date of the code, nor shall such repeal affect the provisions of ordinances letting taxes appropriating money, annexing or detaching territory, establishing franchises, granting special rights to certain persons, authorizing public improvements, authorizing the issuance of bonds and borrowing of money, authorizing the purchase or sale of real or personal property, granting or accepting easements or plats, accepting dedications of land of public use, vacating or setting the boundaries of streets or other public places, nor shall such repeal affect any other ordinance of a temporary or special nature pertaining to subjects not contained in or covered by the code. Section 4, The Code shall be deemed published as of the date of its adoption and approval by the city legislative body and the clerk of the City of Fulton is hereby authorized and ordered to file a copy of the code in the office of the city clerk. Section 5, The Code shall be in full force and effect from and after its date of passage, approval, and publication as required by law. Code shall be presumptive evidence in all quarters and places of the ordinance and all provisions, sections, penalties, and regulations therein contained and of the date of passage and that the same is properly signed, tested, recorded, and approved, and that any public hearings or notices thereof as required by law have been given. This is the first reading.
You get good. Okay. Other being, who wants to speak first? Gotcha.
Mayor Forrester, I've got three things to address with you and I are talking to you about. One, and the most important, is workforce-ready community project. Do I need to talk about that project at all? Or is everybody pretty much up to speed on the workforce readiness?
I don't think everybody knows a bit.
Okay. Well, the state of Kentucky has started a program called the Workforce Community Readiness Project. And the idea is that Kentucky to compete and to get ahead and to land new industry, new businesses, that industries want some verification, some proof, some knowledge that our workforce is both capable and ready to assume jobs. And they do that with a myriad of ways. And so this program was created. With me tonight is Marion Medlock with the Pad Office. Marion is the workforce specialist. Thea Val, the executive director of the chamber. And I really am talking about this issue in terms of being president of the Chamber of Commerce. The program, it's a rather extensive assessment program. And so each... This is a county-wide program, not just a citywide program. And each county must make a decision whether it's going to apply and enter into the workforce readiness project. If you do so, your community can be deemed by the state as in progress. As long as you are in progress, then you're in good stead with Kentucky EDP Cabinet. And you have... And this is a two-year, three-year process to... For them to certify your county is workforce-ready. So for example, there are some... Marion, help me. Five committees, six committees?
There are several criteria in the application process. We've got some handouts where you can describe the criteria.
Good deal. So let me give you just some examples. There is a youth workforce readiness. There are two initiatives within the school system. You must have a graduation rate without dropouts of like 82.28 percent within the entire county, which would be an average of Fulton County and Fulton City Independent. There is a second initiative of youth. And so really, those committees will be formed by the educators in the county, and they would serve on those. There's one for governmental. So there's a play... There's a committee for the mayors of Hickman and Hickman, the county judge executive, and various commissioners to get involved in. There's one on Wi-Fi, getting your entire county Wi-Fi accessible. So that would be an ad hoc committee that we would form with perhaps Fulton Electric that has talked about the concept of maybe offering Wi-Fi to the community. There's one for a mature workforce. So in other words, those like me, there's a test out there that I would take that says I can read, I do math, I can do this, I can do that. And for example, for several years, Goodyear tested all their applicants with this test. So you have your pre-workforce or your youth coming out of high school to say, are they ready? You have your existing adult workforce to assess, are they ready? And then the various other initiatives. When Mayor Forrester and Cub went to Frankfurt, for example, this thing has gotten to the point where the governor, I think, or I heard, mentioned in that meeting, are you guys up to speed on this initiative? Well, somewhat. And the answer was, well, you've got time, but you need to think about this, you need to think about it seriously. Because they will reach a point where they... Kentucky EDP Cabinet will not even send you industrial recruit possibilities to your community if you're not at least in progress in this initiative. So in other words, there will be no state referrals for new industries. So it's a big deal. There are all... And to give you some idea of the assessment of it, there are only five counties from the last map I saw that are currently assessed or approved as workforce-ready. Every other county hasn't even started the process, or they are in progress.
So the states only can send economic possibilities to those five counties?
No, not now. Marion, do we have a timeline yet on that? Or have they not established one yet?
Secretary Hayes has been very vague on that particular point. He has said that counties who are determined as work-ready communities will be shown as preferred, but all counties have an opportunity to recruit, to be recruited from. But they want to showcase the workforce in those, in all communities. But they will be given priority status.
What are the other counties?
The counties that currently are certified are Davis County, Warren County, Woodford...
I just looked at the map.
Yeah. It literally just flew right away.
Did McCracken just basically?
McCracken County is a work-ready community in progress, as most of the counties in the purchase will be, because of the criteria. Boyle, Davies, and...
I'm just saying, I always think of in progress. So the majority of the 21 counties in McCracken are in progress at least.
They have not stopped. They are in the process of pursuing.
There are a lot of counties who have not even started an initiative since the hour of time. I've heard, Marion, that true, that Hickman County has just started it?
Hickman County is coming online at the same time as Fulton County.
All right. So the reason I'm here is, being I have talked, and I think the Chamber of Commerce should be much more valuable than just written code. And I think the chamber should find ways to aid and achieve significant benefit for the community. And so, at Thea's encouragement, quite frankly, I'm not looking for another job or another project. I keep enough of those. But we stand ready as the chamber to act as, if you will, the organization by which we would focus and try to enter Fulton County as a workforce-ready and progress county and start the journey. So what that means is, we would be the administrator or the administrative arm. So we would reach out to various people, starting with the county judge executive and the two mayors, to get their ideas and inputs on people who serve on various communities. We would identify those communities. We would enlighten them in terms of the requirements. And they are... They're fairly extensive, but for example, every meeting has to be documented. People have to sign in as to who was there, how often they meet, what they discuss, what their progress is, and all that has to be reported back. So there's a whole administrative deal. Now, really, Eddie and EDP serve on a committee, but they're not intended to be the administrator of the project. Nor are mayors or city commissions expected to be administrators of the project. So that leaves either an individual or some organization to do that. And that's why we're here tonight, to say that the chamber stands ready, if you so wish, to begin to enter Fulton County into that. And the second reason I'm here is, if you want the chamber to take on this role, then you must be committed to actively participate in the governmental section of the application, if you will, to do that. And I intend to go to the city commission and the mayor of Hickman, as well as the county and judge executive David, to talk to him as well. And if everybody nods their heads, then we will move forward and work with Marion in terms of a formal process and act as the communication piece and the administrative piece.
Question, yeah?
Yes, Billy.
We've just talked about for the last... Well, started last year at our town hall meeting about strategic planning for the city. And now this evening, we've adopted a...
In the process, yeah.
The first reading to establish a strategic planning effort. I wonder what you think about... I think this is great, what you're talking about. But I wonder what you think about the relationship of what you've spoken about and our strategic planning initiative? Can they... Can they work together? Can this be done under the umbrella, a broad umbrella, of strategic planning?
Well, I mean...
I would hate to say that they're mutually exclusive.
No, no, not at all. In fact, Billy, you asked the question. In my mind, a strategic plan of the City of Fulton comprises probably some eight or nine areas. It's residential cleanup.
Right.
And it is commercial downtown redevelopment. It is parks and grants and recreation. It is workforce readiness and jobs. It is... I mean, so it's those kind of large, and you would have people serving on each of those capacities. And certainly, jobs, one of the most critical pieces, would be one of some eight or nine strategic planning initiatives, in my mind.
Well, I would agree completely, and I like what your mind is telling me. I think you're exactly right.
Well, what I'm seeing in Dave and I, you know, if there's some way you can use this committee to... Or that this alone will help it anyway.
No, we can work hand in hand.
We can work hand in hand with this.
Right.
Well, I think he's right in terms of...
I see what you're talking about.
It's one of nine or 10 or 12 or five or six initiatives that go under strategic planning.
In fact, I have a strategic plan for you. I'll give it to you if you want to look at it first. So if you guys want to discuss it, and then if one of you would contact me and let me know if this is something that you want us to spearhead or not, or if you want to talk about it.
I don't think I have.
I've got a question. I know the chamber is taking this on with City of Fulton. But yeah, we involve the Chamber of Hickman in this. Will they... We be co-administrators? But you sure don't want to take... Two city chambers taking care of all the county.
There'll be one application. There'll be one application for the county, so.
But will you contact them and ask for their involvement?
Because if you remember, when we went to Frankfurt, since we are a two-county partnership, we had talked about, could we do a co-application with Fulton, Hickman County? And we can't do that. It has to be separate counties. So there'll be one application for the county, but I think they could ask that input from you.
I think the two chambers should work together to cover the entire county.
Because actually, the fiscal court is the applicant and the representative, and who will be the one that will receive the award notification. So having the two chambers work together actually works very well.
Well, and Cub, I mean, from my perspective, I mean, my personal thought process and thinking about this, it's not fair, nor should it be, that the City of Fulton and Fulton City citizens bear all the work of this. It needs to be equally distributed throughout the county. In fact, if we go forward with this, I hadn't even... Was even going to propose that we meet in Casey and do committee updates. updates, and we have to have people from the Hickman end of the county and the Fulton end of the county, under the auspices of the entire county.
Just an observation, but you mentioned independent school, county school, you've got two chambers.
Right.
That's just an observation.
Okay. The second item I wanted, I wanted to bring you guys up to speed on, and that is the South Fulton New Park Project. And the reason I come here today is because my intent, and I want you to be clearly understanding it, my intent was, yes, to build a new park for the city of South Fulton, but my bigger vision was a much bigger town green for the entire citizens of the Twin Cities, both Fulton and South Fulton. This new park project, I think, as proposed, will greatly benefit the city of Fulton, probably as much as the city of South Fulton. And so, really, it's taking a blighted area just south of Pontotok, and Pontotok is landlocked, it doesn't have sufficient parking, and when you have large events, like the Banana Festival and the Fourth of July, et cetera, there is not enough parking, there's not enough green space, people are out in the streets, et cetera. And so, this park project is now in phase one, which is the legal process, and just so you know, it's four acres of ground in phase one. And this is a half a million dollar park project that's been granted by the Tennessee Parks and Recreation. It requires a fifty percent local match, of which the city of South Fulton didn't have, so I personally am providing the local match piece of the grant. This half million dollar new park will consist of four acres, it will be bounded by the alley that goes behind the buildings on the west side of Broadway, State Line Road, Air's Fort Creek on the west, and Wade Street in the south. Now Wade Street is the street that comes out right in front of the boys' gym, and that is phase one. And those four acres, the conceptual design right now, and it's, we are way far from concrete, so this is just the very beginning ideas, would consist of things like forty to fifty, it depends on how many cars we can get, paved and striped parking, and that paved and striped parking right now, in my mind, would be right on State Line. And the reason for that is because we have too many events at the Pontotok Community Center, old people, et cetera, trying to get out in mud and weeds and everything else, and so that paved and striped parking would be right on State Line Road. Directly behind that, then, would be a new outdoor amphitheater with a full bandstand, a one-acre town lake with thirty-foot aerated fountains lit at night, a quarter of a mile walking trail lit at night, a playground area for the children, and a pavilion, or a picnic pavilion. So that's right now, and that's subject to change. We've got a ways to go. The reason I'm bringing it up is, A, so you're aware of it, and B, I would like to incorporate some aspects of the design of that project that would require approval by the city of Fulton, because it would encroach on Kentucky space. And let me give you the example. I would like to visually unite the two towns with a gateway arch over Kentucky Highway one twenty-nine or State Line Road. So one station would be on the Tennessee side, one station would be in Pontotok Park with an archway that says, "Welcome to the Twin Cities." Fulton, Kentucky on one side, South Fulton, Tennessee on the other. We may, in fact, visually to connect the two communities and the two sides of the road, we might, under the gateway arch, we might tear up asphalt on one twenty-nine and put in cobblestone pavers for a crosswalk. And the real reason I'm here is, we are proposing a permanent bandstand. And my thought there is that tourism, Fulton Tourism currently spends out of their budget each year about ten thousand dollars to rig a main stage every year, and that's a significant part of their budget. And so, if we had a permanent main stage, and that money could be best spent elsewhere, either on other events or enlarging the current events they have, of course, that would require that the performance actually take place on the Tennessee side. Now, the payment could occur on the Kentucky side, or however you want to do that. Cobb and I have briefly spoken, I looked at the tourism statutes, and I didn't see anywhere that it said specifically, "Events must be held within confines of the Commonwealth of Kentucky." But I'm not an expert, and I certainly don't know. My point is this, though, that's a significant part of the park budget, and so if the city of Fulton or Fulton Tourism determines by code or by Kentucky statute that that can't happen, then I don't want to waste our good money on building a permanent bandstand. And at the same time, if you say, "Yes, let's go forward, we want that," then I want that bandstand built to the specifications for wiring, for sound, for size, for height, as the existing stage, to make sure that it's sufficient for the needs of a larger than.
I will check into that, Allison, what you can-
I mean, I have looked at the statutes, I think the concern has always been that the Fulton Tourism Commission is funded with, you know, Fulton business tax dollars, and the concern has always been that they did not want to spend those, they wanted to spend those tax dollars here in the city of Fulton. But I, we have had, we had events last year that occurred on the opposite side of the street. So long as the money is being spent to benefit, and we're deriving some benefit from the city of Fulton, I'm not aware of a prohibition in the statute that would prevent you from spending it just because the event crosses the street.
Well, for example, if you think, if you think back over the years, we spend the tourism dollars on advertising and printing in the state of Tennessee, we hire country western artists every year out of Nashville, we do radio advertising in Tennessee because we have no radio stations here, and so I don't think this is precedent. And again, I am not here to create, to be an irritant, I'm not here to-
No, you're not.
You know, I just want you to be aware, A, the project is coming, now's the time to talk about it before we actually start conceptual design, and to answer that question, so that we can either incorporate or not.
And I think, I think Allison's completely correct on what she's saying, but I've been dealing with a KLC lawyer, and I will double check again.
Okay, and the third item, and this is quick, but, oh, we're done?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Third item, we're done, I'm just curious, as a taxpayer in the city of Fulton, but it is so wonderful, we're finally getting lighted Parkway exits, but I did hear the governor's speech, and he referenced exit two. I hope he was misspoken.
It's been clarified.
Okay. Exit one, exit one.
All right.
That's my one statement.
Yeah, I think it started on the other.
And the last item I would share with you, ladies and gentlemen, is if you have any honey, accessory, you should get me. Can't tell, I've got a little open on Saturday. Thank you.
I can't let this spill later.
Do y'all have any questions for Mary Ann on workforce readiness, because she came down to be with us and support us?
No, not yet. I don't think, yeah.
Well, she's going to be a wonderful resource for us, we won't be able to do it without her.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
I was just, I was just going to say that I hope that we, we really explore and utilize the expertise of our city attorney-
I do.
-before we get too involved with KLC. I respect her a lot more than I do KLC.
She knows everything I do, don't you, Allison?
Just couldn't resist.
She knows everything I do. I don't do anything that doesn't get, go to her first. Any other guests have anything to say?
Yes.
Okay.
My name's Jeremy Buchanan, working for the purchase development district. You had earlier a copy of a letter-
Yeah, I've given it to Eddie.
Generally, in the steps, they receive that signed by, because they present your grant agreement, you're talking with the folks at the Department of Local Government, and never try and speak in process, and they went ahead and emailed us a copy of the grant agreement, so we can come this evening and try to do some of the upfront paperwork. The only thing I want to do this evening, I want to do, conditional upon the city attorney having a chance to review and approve anything that we're entering into. As you know, y'all have been working for two, three months now with the group that went into the industrial park, the MVP, the government, and the announcement. Part of what the incentives to bring them here was, the city applied for community block grants, and that was an amount of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars would be what would benefit MVP. There's a thirty-five thousand dollar piece of that, that would be administration to make sure that it was done correctly. And we come this evening with a grant agreement from the Department of Local Government, and it puts a few obligations on the city, so I want to make sure that we go ahead and, contingent upon city attorney's approval, authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement, and then there's a legally binding agreement that passes obligations on to the IDA, who will in turn loan the money to MVP International, who will, over the course of seven years, pay that money back, and that money will rest in a revolving loan account that will be used for economic development activities in the city of Fulton, well, actually, in the city of Fulton. It can be used to improve infrastructure in their industrial park, be used to buy additional land in that area, it can be used to build additional buildings, so it's really a win for the community, because the state's giving you this grant, but you're also going to be able to recoup that money to use again.
And we've got five loans.
Yes, ma'am. So I think the first action we need is authorization for the mayor to sign a loan agreement, conditional upon the city attorney having a chance to review.
Okay.
I'm trying with her.
Minutes four, twenty thirteen thirty-one.
Second.
Second, Dave. Authorizing the mayor to sign-
KLC?
I'll check on that right after I leave here. Authorizing the mayor to sign this, city beat. Okay, we got a motion and a second call, please.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Melkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Friggin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
The grant agreement outlines specific steps that have to be taken in order to get the release of funds, so if the IDA can obtain those funds through the city to loan. One of those is that you pass on quite a few of the obligations through the legally binding agreement. We've got a draft copy of that, that will need you to authorize the mayor to sign conditions that the city attorney has a chance to review at the borders prior to.
Okay, she needs that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that legally binding, is that the same as what it's always been, with different CBGs, just different names?
Yeah.
It'll mirror the same one that was done for BPD that Rick County Attorney signed off on, so it should be, other than just name changes and funding?
Do you have copies of that, Allison?
No, it'll be different, but just per the amount of-
I absolutely want her to review all this, and then everything is fine, because-
Okay.
I'm like the stakes, and I don't want to be the boss of the stakes.
Okay, all right, you're good. Okay.
I say that, just saying it won't be really something hard.
So do we need another municipal order to do that?
Yes, it's separate document.
Yes, ma'am. So what was the topic? Legally binding agreement between the city of Fulton, Fulton Industrial Development Authority, and the city of PD Group International Incorporated.
So what, if the organization is signing that, hell, in contingent upon, upon your part?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn, this is for a quick one.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion. Motion by Jeff, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Martha, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Melkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Friggin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn? Yes.
Another piece that we have to supply, then, is a copy of revolving funds, I'll tell you, y'all never had a revolving fund before. The revolving fund would actually have to be set up by the IDA to establish where they would put the money, when it's paid back, and I have a draft copy, and I don't know that, it's just, it's one of those things that I want y'all to be aware of, and I'll give Allison a copy for her to review, but I don't think it requires-
A motion, or you don't?
I don't think it's anything for y'all to adopt, but I do, it's part of the release of funds, and I want you to be aware of.
Okay.
So, and then, at some point, the city will have to amend its budget in order to receive the funds, so I don't know if y'all take care of that.
We usually take care of that at the end of the year.
Okay, before the release of funds, we have to show-
Okay, you need to do it before then?
Yeah, they'll want to see where it's been amended, I mean, it's-
Do it in a meeting, like next meeting, well, that'd be fine.
Unless you can do it this evening, I don't know.
No, we can't.
Okay, that's fine.
We're meeting twice a month now.
When's the next meeting?
In two weeks.
Yeah, we have to read it twice, we have to read it twice.
Well, they'll accept it off the first reading.
They'll accept it off of a first reading.
They'll accept it off the first readings, as long as they know it's in process.
Or you want us to call a special call?
Jeremy, will that slow that down? Does that have to be done before the engaged process can be done, up there?
We have to have everything in before they will release the funding, so, that being said, we've got a lot of stuff to review, we've got, if it looks like this is going to slow us down, but I don't think at this point it will, because y'all are going to meet again on-
What's that date?
Tonight?
Eight, eight.
Eight, okay.
If you see that we need to have a special call, just let us know.
As long as they'll accept it off the first reading, so if it's written on the eighth, we'll still be on track.
Million either, right? Million?
Yeah, you need to say.
Okay.
The Department of Local Government will require a residential displacement relocation assistance plan be adopted. Their plan simply states that y'all will not displace anybody from their home with this project. They're going, the building's been there since nineteen ninety-six, is that about right? So it's a safe bet that y'all aren't going to displace anybody.
No, we're not anybody in.
They still require, as part of the release of funds, so I have a copy of a resolution.
Okay. Give us this, this Allison.
That will satisfy that requirement.
You need to read that, Allison, or you need to look at it, or what?
You want us to adopt this tonight, or can we do this on the eighth? Do you want this done tonight? Well, it's like you, if we do it with the budget amendment on the eighth-
I don't think so, I mean, that's an document that doesn't require two readings, isn't it?
Correct, yes, yeah, we can go with that.
So what are you doing?
Just add it to the agenda for the eighth.
Okay.
And if you need me to be back on the eighth to answer questions, I can, or if, you know, if you want to give me questions prior to, that's fine, too. The last piece that they require on the release of funds is a procurement code for the project, that whatever the city of Fulton procures for the project will be done according to this code. Y'all are procuring that for the project, but it's like the residential displacement plan. You have to have one place, I'll get that, y'all can adopt that one, too. And I've worked with Lisa in using the same account that you used on your housing project, because lock grant requires that you have a non-interest spreading account open, and that's what, y'all have a designated CDVG account, so that works fine.
Okay.
And the only other thing that I have is, and we don't have to do this tonight, but I will leave it for you, in order to have a community development project, you have to have a certified administrator be your administrator project for you. I am one, the add has two or three that actually work for us, and part of the obligations that you hire a certified administrator, I have a contract here, I'll leave that to Dallas for the county, but that is not an obligation of the general fund, that comes out of the grant. The grant is actually for a million dollars, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, that would be presented to MVP, the other thirty-five thousand dollars would be for our administration costs, so, unless anybody has any questions.
Allison will watch you.
Yeah, and if you, you will email me, and then I can send you any questions that we have prior to the next meeting, so you should be able to take that, take care of that beforehand.
Okay. Eddie, you have anything else you want?
No, I'll just say, thanks, you all for doing that. I can tell you, I called the governor's office last week, because that was the last thing, Jeremy, and his folks got it put together, got it to Jay Nichols' office, who's a BLG, and Jay packaged it up, sent it over to the governor's office, and it was kind of sitting there, so, called last week, and told Coleman that many of you met, who was the governor, for the announcement, that we needed to sign, and he signed it Thursday.
I got it, I got that letter today.
So we have that now, and the governor signed off on it, he wants to see that happen and give that to us, and so I appreciate you all taking the time, but-
The company's excited about getting started, and they need equipment to do it, so, the sooner they get the equipment, the sooner they'll create the jobs, the sooner y'all get payroll back.
Right, that's good.
Well, this is a great asset, and I need to thank you about it, the one that the county got for BPD.
Yeah, yeah.
They could use ninety thousand, they have to finish out that airport.
They just had that airport.
The city didn't have to pay for some others, so it has uses for the whole county and city state, so.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a key. Jeremy Buchanan.
City manager.
Took me a couple things, one, we had a first reading tonight concerning the amendment of the ordinance book, and that's all in conjunction with us having our ordinance book reprinted with the ordinances that we have. We continue to go through it every Tuesday, and, you know, we're still finding ordinances that haven't been put in, that do not get seen in with that original posting. We continue to go through it every Tuesday. And, you know, we're still finding ordinances that haven't been put in that, do not get seen in with that original posting. So as we find those, we could update this book quarterly, semi-annual or annual, at a cost.
Of course.
But if we're going to do it, we got to do it, we're going to have to pay the cost.
You're right.
So probably from each meeting from here on out until we get it complete, we'll have a first or a second reading. And once we get, you know, several ordinances adopted, then we'll update the American.
Publishing.
Publishing Company will update them online and send us the pages to put into the books, tell us which pages to remove from the books, and we will do that in a systematic order. So a lot of work going on in this field. Another thing, your approved hiring of a co-enforcement officer is tonight. There's going to be some training that several of us are going to Thursday at Calvert City. Be about a three-hour training conducted by KLC and at a cost of thirty dollars per individual. And Mayor's going, I'm going, Terry and Mike are going.
I've got two members.
Three, two, at least two members that have agreed to be on the co-enforcement board are going and possibly one other. We've got three on that board right now. So that will be a good workshop for us Thursday. And then last but not least, by all means, if you haven't been alive today, even though we had a hostage situation here in Fulton, started about ten-thirty this morning and Gunny was here when the alarm went out and he asked me if I wanted to go with him. And so he said, yes, but I'll keep my distance. But I won't, I won't just tell y'all it wasn't, it was enlightening to see Kentucky State Police, Fulton Police Department, South Fulton Police Department, Department of Fish and Wildlife, who have more authority in the state than anybody other than the State Patrol properly. Don't realize that, but they came armed and ready. And then also the County Sheriff's Department, the Fulton Fire Department, who don't even have. Public Works was there in the beginning to, to.
Fulton Electric.
Fulton Electric was there to barricade the streets, you know, and surround the area and.
Terry, come out from behind that thing so we can see, because you worked so hard today. Because I wasn't there, but I heard.
There was a lot of people.
I know, but you were directing traffic out there and I appreciate it.
The guys, and Terry was one of the first ones there, and the ones that got there, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a spring day. A lot of them stood out in that cold weather, wind blowing for about four or four and a half hours. And like I said, we, Gunny and I were, were in kind of in charge of the landing strip for the Black Hawk helicopter that was.
Diverted.
Sent from Frankfurt to assist. And about the time they were to get here is when the individual surrendered. So, I mean, it was a statewide, and the KSP, they don't fool around. I mean, Chief Powell's be committed and the way that they all communicate together and, you know, handle the crowd, a lot of people, of course, drove by and a lot of people parked and nobody got within the rooms. And then it was, and there was no encounters of any kind, other than getting the individual out of the.
Get them out of the house and just, I think, good Lord, and nobody was shot. Because it was definitely some exchange of gunfire, so.
But.
We just want to thank everybody for doing this fantastic job today. Like I said, nobody was sent, but there was gunfire and so we just want to thank everybody for doing this.
I guess we had all, maybe one or two of our officers there.
That's correct. Ninety percent of them were there.
Everybody did what, and Donna at the police station was handling calls to and from all agencies and.
Yeah, not all, that's dispatch, countywide dispatch did a great job too.
So it was, it was.
It shows we all did what we have to do.
That's all.
Okay. City Commissioners?
I have something.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to see, this is a commission draft ordinance that states that members of city-based committees or city employees cannot serve or be employed if they've been convicted of a felony or owe back taxes or utilities to the city for over sixty days. And if they do owe back taxes or utilities over sixty days or they have a convicted felon on the record, they can't be employed nor they cannot serve on city committees.
Committees or boards or both?
Both, whatever. I know that City of South Fulton has this ordinance in place and I'd like CS to put it in place too.
Okay, it was three stipulations.
A convicted felon, owe back taxes or utilities over sixty days.
That's and boards, committees and boys.
And boys. And when they took the, owed to the office, it kind of states if you've been a convicted felon. But the back taxes or utilities needs to be applied also. And I have another issue. The Tourism Committee at this time is not fully capable of being active committee. Madam Mayor, I'm asking that you let the City Commission rethink how best to go about the restructure of the Tourism Board. And maybe the Tourism Board issue needs to be put with the Strategic Planning Committee. So they may restructure it and make it more diversified and city-friendly. And let us have this input in that. And I also feel that City Managers should not serve on the committee but be an advisor, a not voting member.
Well, I have, that's okay, you can do that, but first the statutes say that's up to, up to me and I.
I know, and I'm asking you, I said that, Madam Mayor.
I know, and I have got my appointments to make tonight. I've already, I've worked on this diligently for many weeks now. And I have, I'll shoot you back. And I'm not doing it without being involved, I mean, no check it all out, I've done all that. And so.
Well, let me just, I would, I would tend to agree with the idea that whatever we do, just like Jeff Campbell thought tonight on the workforce. I think if we're going to do strategic planning, we ought to roll these things into strategic planning just so we know where it is we're going, what the purpose is, what we're going to do. And secondly, Mayor, I guess I'd agree with you that you certainly have the prerogative to appoint. That's obvious to me. But I would think that you have the prerogative to appoint after this board has decided that we need appointments at this time.
I do need appointments at this time.
You may, but I'm not sure the Commission does at this time.
The Tourism Commission does, yes.
But, well, let me restate that. It seems to me that, that you should appoint once this body agrees that this is the function of a board or a committee or whatever, and now we're ready to appoint. For instance, you wouldn't appoint somebody to the Strategic Planning Committee until this body decides we're going to have a Strategic Planning Committee. And I guess I would think the same thing is true with tourism.
This is a complete and separate board from all of this, is that right, Allison?
We have no input in, we have no input into the.
By statute, you don't?
No, no.
That's correct.
By statute, and you can't change the statute?
No, in fact, even the recommendations, you don't have, I mean, the statute says that the commit, the actual Tourism Commission, you know, that's, that's the way it reads, that they would make recommendations, but the full appointment is vested solely in the discretion of the mayor.
So we don't have any prerogative with respect to the Tourism Committee?
There's nothing to prevent you from discussing, you know, just as, you know, you can discuss any topic that relates to the city, but as far as whether or not, you know, when, when there's a vacancy, she has the power of appointment and she can do that at any time, once a vacancy is, has been made.
Okay, I want to tell you what I've done and then we can go from there. Okay. I'm making an executive decision, and I can do this. I'm moving Christie Rogers from an at-large place to a resident position. And then Jeff LeBlanc will go to an at-large position because he lives outside of the city, but there is no statute that says he has an at-large position that you have to live within the city. Just a Kentucky resident. April Gallimore will be going on as a motel hotel person. And Neil Patel from the Kingsway Motel, I have talked to him and he said he would be glad to serve and he's decided back coming on board. So that completes the appointments at this time. Okay. Do you have something else?
No.
Okay. Okay, I have a thank you note here from the Buzz family. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The other issue that we brought up, are we just going to?
What's that?
An ordinance about the felonies.
She's got, she's written it down.
I will work on that for the next meeting.
She's got, I'm sorry, she wrote it down.
I wrote the other one, so.
I just never hear what we.
Yeah, I think we should.
Well, I think we're this week.
No, it's not a best way.
Okay.
Okay, this is a thank you note from the Louis Buzz family to our special work family. Thank you for the beautiful plant that you all sent. We will try to keep it looking that way. You all have been wonderful to us. We appreciate all the love and support that you all have shown to us throughout the last seven weeks. You hold a special place in our hearts, Covin Deacon. Okay, there was one other thing I had. Well, we're glad you found a place for Turbo, so we didn't have to put him down.
Kirk found it.
Did Kirk find it?
Yes, Kirk found it.
Thanks God for Kirk.
Went to Clark School to a rescue group for this kind of animal and they go to service and then they serve.
Well, I'm sorry looking up at the officer when he took the picture, when Anita took that picture. It was hard on me.
He went to a good place.
Good, good. And just command Michael Fly, assistant coach of Florida Coast. I have enjoyed his ballgames, I've enjoyed watching him and I heard his interview this morning on the, on the radio station and he is so, such a special young man and so beholden to his family for supporting him through all of this and it just makes your heart feel good that a young man in our area has done so well. Okay, yes, sir. Yes, Gunny?
You know.
Yeah. Allison's got two, I think I skipped her.
Let me go over this. Listen. I guess last week it was I went to the pad office for.
Flood.
Flood plane management.
I saw a sign. I saw a sign.
That's the PowerPoint that they gave us. In a nutshell, I'll try to sum it up for you what it really means. Basically, there is this, and you guys may have some questions and I won't be able to answer them. I'll take them back. The bigger Water Flood Insurance Reform Act of two thousand twelve was passed last year by the federal government through FEMA. What this all really means is that all these subsidies on our floodplain insurance is going to go away, in a nutshell.
The government's, don't you think?
That's correct. If, let me, to impact you, so you know the impact, if you flip over to the next to last page in that little packet I gave you, you'll see an email from Noah Taylor. He is the floodplain guy for the state. In the city alone, we have thirty-eight policies.
One of mine.
One of the city's.
And I'm not in the.
What all these different zones you see there, I don't, I can't explain all those two yet because I'm still working on it today. I got, I had it all laid on my desk. There's part of the stuff I've got to read through to figure out exactly what it means. I don't know who they are, they aren't able to tell you who the thirty policies are because of Privacy Act information. But what it's going to impact is that commercial properties, starting in August of this year, they are going to, the difference between full risk rate and subsidy rate, they're going to increase them over the next four years, forty-five percent, until they reach full risk rate. How many people down town have those policies? I don't, I can't tell you what kind of impact that is. I would say we probably ought to put something in the paper so that these people know to be contacting their insurance people to find out how that's going to impact them. My insurance agents aware of. Okay, so, like I said, I don't know what the, what the impact's going to be there. Also, secondary homes, anybody who doesn't reside near eighty percent of the time, that subsidy on those is going away as well. So anybody who doesn't reside in that home eighty percent of the time, it's considered a secondary home and it'll be going away as well.
Excuse me, just so I can understand the words. This letter says, but over the next five to ten years, these subsidies will be slowly increased.
That's correct. And here's part of, here's what I ran into up there, was nobody will give you a hard date. They all want to talk about a soft date. All I, all I can go by is, these were two different guys. This was a guy that's a consultant, put this PowerPoint together. Noah, the guy who threw up the email, is from the state, and he does say that. But talking to him today, he backed up and said, y'all, that's correct. Some of, some of the commercial properties are going to go away come August one of this year. Okay, so he.
So some will increase and some will decrease.
No, they're all going, everybody's going to go.
The subsidies will go up?
No, the subsidies are going away.
Well, this says increased. That's my point, I guess, on page one, the next to the last, the paragraph, the second sentence of the third sentence. But over the next five or ten years, these will slowly.
But in the next one, he says people will immediately see an increase will be, he's wrong.
Okay, that's my question.
His email's wrong.
My question.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, I didn't.
If you're going to increase the subsidy, your premium goes down.
No, it's funny. I'm going by what, what these guys said here on the PowerPoint, they're going away. Yeah, it's basically, you're, we should write page two and then if you see on page three, also directly before risk. In the past, a property owner, if I own a property and I sold it to you, Bill, as long as we paid the premiums up, I could transfer that subsidy on an insurance policy to you, but that's going away, they wouldn't be able to do that.
No grand bother.
That's right. And they also, anybody that lets a policy lapse, if it lapses, it's automatically going to the full risk rate. So they're going to lose that subsidy. And then new policies that are being issued are going to be the BW twelve rate, which is that, the short term for that beverage water flood insurance. And then, like I said, commercial property is going to be affected August one according to. But now that doesn't mean if FEMA's not going to push the dates back, because they've been pushing them back. I'm just saying that we just need to, our citizens and our business owners need to know it's coming somewhere down the road, for sure. You know, I don't, like I said, I don't know what the impact's going to be. There are some ways we can mitigate some of this through some projects. It was two thousand one, since the last time they came in and did a survey to tell us what we could do.
Do we, what, do we have a new map of?
There is a new floodplain map, but I think they're probably going to wind up redoing it again.
Because I'm not in the floodplain.
Because now they have come out with this new technology, it's called MODAR, which they fly over in Fulton County, was the first, one of the first counties to get it done because of what we went through with the Mississippi River. So now they'll probably redo the maps again. Bob, where are we at on that retention up on Northeast Drive? Has it been done?
Part of it has, yes, it's part of that FEMA project.
When that's done, we can probably send up a request, I've got a lady to talk to, probably be able to make a request, we may get some points in this CRS. It's kind of works like ISO for the fire system, who gives us a fire rating. This, this company also gives you a rating for the flood systems and you can earn points by doing different things across there. But in a nutshell, the floodplain, we've just got to watch it in co-enforcement and make sure that people, if somebody's building or somebody's doing anything in a floodplain, we got to be right on top of it. A lot of that stuff has to go in through FEMA to be approved before we can get issued. But anyways, I'll be learning more and I'll try to keep you informed and we just need to let our citizens know as well, you know, to need to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
I have just two things to talk to you about. One of. Um, I have just two things to talk to you about, um, one of them is, I received a letter, um, March thirteenth from, well, that's, from an attorney, um, actually from a, a law firm in Lexington, Kentucky, who basically, um, corresponded saying that his firm represents the Kentucky Concealed Carry Coalition, um, and they have been on, um, they have been reviewing and researching codes of ordinances of various cities across the Commonwealth, and they found that, uh, we have currently on the books, um, an ordinance with regard to carrying weapons in cemeteries, and basically it is volitive of the KRS statute, and they've asked that it be repealed. Um, I have, that was actually something that, that Gunny and I talked about, and, um, during the course of the next few weeks, as the city manager and the department heads go, continue their review of these ordinances, they were going to get to that one anyways, um, but they, they have asked that we repeal it, and so, in an effort to be able to respond and let them know that we are aware of the, um, statutory revisions, um, I have prepared an ordinance for tonight to repeal the firearm section, um, regarding, um, permitting firearms within the public cemetery. Um, and I'd like to read, it's short, I'd like to read it tonight.
Go ahead.
So that we can go ahead and adopt it and let them know that we are being responsive to their coalition efforts across the Commonwealth.
Okay.
Okay, uh, this is City of Fulton, Kentucky, this would be ordinance two thousand thirteen.
Oh, six.
Oh, six. Um, an ordinance repealing ordinance number fourteen dash thirty-six, which requires special permission from the city permitting firearms within a public cemetery, whereas the City of Fulton, Kentucky adopted ordinance number fourteen dash three-six firearms to implement and regulate the permit of firearms in public cemeteries within its city limits, and whereas the City of Fulton Commission has now determined that ordinance number fourteen dash three-six should be repealed in its entirety, now therefore being ordained by the City Commission of Fulton, Kentucky that section one dash zero-one, ordinance number fourteen dash, dash, three-six repealed. Ordinance number fourteen dash three-six entitled Firearms Relating to Permitting Firearms Within a Public Cemetery Within the City Limits of Fulton, Kentucky and enacted on May fourteenth, nineteen sixty-two, is hereby repealed in its entirety. Section one dash zero-two, effective date, this ordinance shall become effective upon passage approval and publication according to law, this will be the first reading.
Okay, first reading, we'll do it, you want to set that on the, our next meeting also?
Yeah.
She'll need a copy of that.
Okay, and then the other thing that, um, I had tonight was, I've passed you all out a copy of a draft of an ordinance that I started in connection with the department head and the city managers' review, um, what is basically occurring, so you understand their process, is they're reviewing the, the ordinances that we feel like are outdated and need some attention, um, we're checking them with KRS and things of that nature, and, um, you know, Gunny's basically taking notes, hearing those and providing those to me, and then, um, what I'm doing is identifying those provisions and the ordinances that need to be amended, and the ordinance you see in front of you is the first draft of the, the amendments to the first ten chapters of our ordinance.
Okay.
Or our code of ordinance, so what I'd like for you to do is take that with you and review it, if there are comments and/or suggestions, please feel free to email those to me. Um, I, I can tell you, um, in section two, where, um, we're discussing the chapter four alcoholic beverages, um, particularly with regard to the fees, uh, we noticed in our ordinance that our fees, uh, did not seem to be at all in line with the KRS statute, um, so I have, Gunny sent me today, the, was it Murray? Uh, Murray just adopted an ordinance identifying and dealing with the same issues, um, basically what position that they're taking, which was talked about in the city managers' meeting with the department heads, was that we adopt the fee schedule that KRS sets out. Now, the KRS fee schedule, I will tell you now, it says, uh, it identifies fees for each class of cities on a lot of the different, um, sections, and it will, it says that the fee shall not exceed, and let's say for a retailer distribution license, um, cities in the fourth class, six hundred dollars. So, we can adopt the six hundred dollars, or we could adopt something less than that six hundred dollars, but our ordinance currently does not take into consideration all of the different licenses, and there are, you know, I think we identify three different licenses, and KRS identifies maybe ten, I don't know, or more than that.
At least two, well, you do ten and a, and one on the sale, and then you've got distilleries and, I realize we don't have one, but they have an old, dot oh seven oh does distilleries and manufacturers.
We also have one.
So, you know, that's something that you might want to take a look at, and you can give me your thoughts, I plan on having this ready to be read at our April eighth meeting as well, so.
Allison, oh, KRS said the city could not set their fees lower than, than what the state set.
It does, if the, if, if KRS does have a statute that says that, but it says that when there are fees established that are, that are basically set. This particular statute specifically says that the fees shall not be, shall not exceed, and then it lists the, which means, you know, you can't go over the six hundred, but you could do something less on this.
But this is in addition to their business license fees as well?
Yes, yes.
So, business license does not cover their alcoholic license?
Correct, yes.
Which is the way it is now.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
So, we're losing revenue by not doing so.
Yes.
Will we appeal, make it cross the board? We'll make it through.
Yes. Um, so that's one thing to consider, whether or not we want to adopt the, you know, the maximum amount that KRS provides, or if we want to come up with something in between there. Um, and, uh.
Is it ready in complete entirety by the next meeting?
Yes, I'd like to read, because this is the, the idea is that at each meeting from now on, we will do a reading of the chapters that were completed, so.
That was all there?
Yes. So, this is the first ten chapters, we want to read it April eighth, and then do the second reading at the next meeting, along with the first reading of chapters eleven through twenty.
I have a question though.
Why was every odd number reserved? I don't know, it's just funny, it's odd. That may, I don't know if that was just a publishing, so, you know, suggestion by him, I'm not sure, so you add something.
They take your, they take these ordinances, like we, we may, we may put it as twenty thirteen something, when they reprint the book, it won't be twenty thirteen, it'll be chapter something, so I guess they leave a chapter open in case.
They fill it in.
Maybe it doesn't fit in one of the other chapters, they've got to put it now.
They can't add columns.
In that chapter, so that's why they need it that way.
I have a question about this one, it's okay, you have chickens in the city, they just have to be in a place.
Yes, that is currently, well, and let me back up real quick, because that is something that I thought maybe y'all could tell me tonight, um, section four, chapter eight, it's, we are changing that, and it was titled licensing of dogs, we're re-titling that to licensing of animals, so that it affects dogs and cats and all other.
Does it affect chickens?
So, but it doesn't have any money in that little blank.
Yes.
That's what they don't know.
Okay.
And we talked about this once before, about whether or not we wanted to go into this licensing process where people actually had to basically, you know, Red come in, pay a fee, and they would receive a permit to have animals, so.
We used to go to the.
We adopted this a couple of years ago when we adopted our big animal statute, and we either need to, I think, keep it, we either need to keep it, clean it up, and assign an amount that needs to be paid for these permits, which needs to include your administrative fees and the cost for the metal tags that will be issued for these animals.
See, are we going to do those, I'm supposed to stay, don't wear those tags, we couldn't have those in years.
We haven't, but you can, we're making the choice to, I mean.
We can do it.
What, the reason from the code enforcement, if I understand, the reason from the code enforcement perspective, when this was talked about in their meeting, was that it would be easier for code enforcement to regulate this if the animals had a tag, you know, a big, a little red tag.
Um, you know who owns these animals when they get lost?
Right, right, they'll all be lost, but, you know, it'll be easier for them to, obviously, if they see a dog and it has a tag, we'll, we will know the owner, if it doesn't, then, um, it will be easier for the code enforcement officer to, you know.
They used to be sold at the police department, is that correct?
Yeah, we used to, you.
They were sold. That was years ago, so we sold here.
Sold here, yeah.
Somebody brought the idea to me, they do, you might even assign a weekend, uh, once a year, and you might offer, do it down at the park, and offer the tags at a discounted price, if you come red today, or, you know.
Good idea. Lord, I have stairwells.
Vaccination.
Yeah, you might even have the vets come down, do vaccinations.
I thought you used to come by the vet's clinic too.
I mean, works in a couple of ways, first off, you find a dog that, that apparently don't know who it belongs to, you've got some sort of identification if, if they licensed it properly, and, and if we get into, maybe the dog bites somebody, so then we've got still another way to, you know, it, it just gives us some accountability. It's, it's not uncommon at other places around the country that one's the same thing.
I think we all agree generally that this was a good thing, it was something that, you know, I think we labored overall when we did the animal ordinance, and we still agree and still think that conceptually it's a good idea, it's just from a regulatory standpoint and enforcement, well, how, what's going to make it the easiest to enforce, and then.
It's only a good idea for the regulatory and the enforcement side.
It won't be easy to enforce it all.
I mean, it's going to be easier to, I mean, to, for code enforcement to do it, but it's not going to be easy for us to enforce, well, it up well, in court.
Then you've got, you've got a choice to strike it, don't have it, just if you can't, can't control it, want to have it on the books.
But I do think that this identifies and, and attempts to deal with some of our animal issues, I mean, you know, if, if people have to be responsible enough as pet owners to come in, obtain the tag for their pet, and if you've got, you know, if you've got three dogs, and you're going to buy three tags, and you've got to put a tag on them, that way if they're loose, we know who they belong to, and two, if they don't, then it's, code enforcement clearly knows that's an animal that needs to be.
Or taken home.
But the question that I, or the answer I need from you is, what is the fee, and keep in mind, it's a per animal fee, so we don't want to make it.
We've got to know what's the tag.
We've got to find out, we're, that's why this is a draft, we.
Right.
I think that's ten dollars, I would think.
It'd be a minimal fee, but you got to have.
I think they used to be five dollars years and years ago.
Well, I, I would think you could buy those tags for less than a dollar, so.
I think it was two dollars, seven and a half, so.
Was it?
Based on demand or the plans that you buy.
So, I, you know, if you can send me your thoughts on that again, that's just one thing, um. The only other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention was that we were going to adopt, on page one in section three, we are, um, basically, in case you look at that and you wonder what in the world that is, we're creating a new article under the, um, chapter six, amusement and entertainment, um, back several years ago, the county adopted, um, they, an ordinance regulating sexually oriented businesses and their employees, and basically this would just become a part of our, we'd just be creating a new chapter and adopting and incorporating the ordinance that they enacted, theirs was like an eighteen page ordinance, so, um, we would just be adopting it.
It is a promise, I'm very.
We have a camera.
This is a big pro act, this will be.
Anything else, Ms. Allison? I like that section. Okay. Lost my other sheet. We don't have any executive stations, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.